Please rise for the slenching of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open the meeting from comments in the public at this time. You want to go now?
You don't have me on.
Book.
I figured if I'm going to say something.
Well, you can wait for the end.
Do you? Whatever.
Go on.
Books, wrong book. As you know, I attended the workshop in Saratoga Springs. It was very interesting. I had a private meeting with Peter Welch and also Kevin Millington. Kevin Millington is the Department of State linkage between them and Empire State Development Corporation and that branch. We discussed our existing first grant. Incidentally, the true balance of that particular account right now, we still have $92,000 to spend. $8,000 of that will be paid, we've already paid it, but we just paid it to Abdala Engineering, and it will be reimbursed by E S D C. As an usher to that meeting, we had a new representative come down, engineering representative from Empire State Development Corporation. His name is Kevin Rendley. And he's very sharp, very, he's young, but very sharp, nothing wrong with being young. He reviewed the project like what he saw. He has one problem, not with our project, but basically he's replacing the famous Mr. Ilacqua, whom you've probably heard me mumble about in the past. This gentleman swears he will never call a meeting here. He do the meeting calls and he will not come into town without advising us that he's coming. The only problem he has is when Mr. Ilacqua left, his position took all his files, including the experts. So he's asking us, can we replace a few files here and there to keep his record straight? And that truly a problem, we have records they have to locate and find. Back to the workshop. After we had the discussions with Mr. Millington and Mr. Welch, boy, I'm trying to just remember this, it's getting tougher and tougher. I then attended the workshops on park and recreation grants, which turned out to be rather interesting because the official that was supposed to give it was incapacitated. He sent along his next in line, who had brought a couple of ladies who were supposed to be the experts on grants. And after about 10 minutes of ladies arguing back and forth of what the right way and the wrong way to write a grant and how it works and this and that and the other, he asked, has anybody here been successful in getting a grant? I raised my hand. So they asked me to get up and I guess, I could almost say I gave the majority of the workshop. It just so happened that Ms. Castro and the other gentleman after I left that part of it asked if I would be willing to help them in future workshops. And I said, as long as it didn't involve, you know, it didn't hurt in any way what I'm doing for the village and they would pick up the expense, it's okay by me. But it was rather interesting and then they had me do basically the same thing in the D O S department here today. This week, paperwork is moving along nicely. This week, Peter Welch will be here with the new representative from Thousand Islands Park to discuss a contract for the second grant, the $200,000 grant. That should be resolved very soon. We also discussed the $60,000 grant for downtown revitalization. A strong hint was made by the Department of State that we should try to tie into the outfit that's working with Plattsburgh. Their name is Wyatt? Let me check my notes. Hyatt Palma, P-A-L-M-A, not Palmer or not typical New England R. I called Plattsburgh, talked to Rosemary Schrudemaker, who has, is the contact person for the city of Plattsburgh. She gave me their telephone number and a very brief synopsis of what they're doing for the city of Plattsburgh. She then said she would send additional information. One of her secretaries called later in the day and gave me additional data. Basically, what Hyatt Palma does is they take, they're in Virginia first of all, they will send you a book, a workshop book, and basically they will give you a whole list of things that you need to get done. Surveys of downtown facilities, which you have already in inventory. You will need to put together a historic inventory, buildings inventory, any schemes or plans anybody has, the theme for the Village of Ross's Point. And they won't come here first. They will just send you this package and the volunteer group will do the work. It's very important that the volunteer group keep track of its hours because we are allowed by law to consider that employment, not to them, but that's $15 per hour donation they're making to this project. So it's important to keep record of how many meetings you have and how much time you spend on it because those hours are part of our share. Also, anything that the village put in prior to April 1st, 2002, or since April 1st, 2002, not prior, since April 1st, 2002, is creditable against the village's share. You have more than the $60,000 match by far already. So basically, if you want to look at it that way, it's freebie, from the point of view of putting out any dollars. The paperwork, I'm putting together the budget on this. The paperwork will be prepared very shortly, I'd say probably within the next two weeks. I have to talk to Peter Welch, he's going to be here this week anyways, but I really, I'm very suspicious of this old Hyatt Palma thing. Because in talking to the gentleman today, after leaving four messages, he finally did call. And basically, it's a husband and wife operation. You do the work, they get the credit. And they'll analyze all your input and then come back and give you a marketing plan. And I don't believe that's what you're looking for. So the next step, after we talked to Peter, after I talked to Peter about it this week, the next step would be to create an R F P, Request for Proposals. Advertise it in the paper and various companies will then, you know, you can establish a price level if you want to spend part of the $60,000. At which time, you can then pick your best bid and go with them. And of course, whatever they bid is what you're going to end up coming out of your grant. Please understand, all state grants, and I must underline this, whether it's from Empire State Development Corporation, whether it's from parks and historical preservation, whether it is from Department of State, you spend first, they reimburse. It's something to keep in mind next year when you consider your budget a rollover fund because if you were hit with a major expenditure, you know, things are planned as best they can and then, you know, to go on schedule, but in the event that, you've got to have the dollars upfront. But they will be reimbursed. The reimbursements coming out of V S D C, since I talked to Kevin Millington, well, the guy gets action because the new engineer was here within three days after talking him. As far as the second grant, hopefully, as soon as the budget is completed, by the way, they told me that they would send the mayor a contract to sign for the $60,000 grant, at which time that will go back and it's go-go-go from there. However, just time and expenditures from 2002, April 2002, are still valid. So the downtown lighting, the clog, the cornish on the building, all that stuff is usable. Okay? So keep that in mind. And you're not really going to take any dollars out of any budget at this point. You will upfront to pay the bill and it'll be reimbursed. Okay? And again, please, consider next year your budget deliberations. You should have a rolling fund. And if it's not used, it just rolls over the next year. If it is used, it gets reimbursed. You've got to basically have a cancel check at least the day you did the work. That's how it works. Okay? As far as the waterfront project, it's going on quite, it's not moving very far right now, but I did talk to A E B A today. They will have our rendering, our color rendering of the project before June 10. And I also was advised by the Department of State to apply for two additional grants of $350,000 each. One from Parks and Recreation, one from Department of State under the EPA Clean Water Act to get our additional money to finish to go along with the project, have any place to go along with the project. Those documents will be in your hands prior to June 20th. June 20th is the deadline date, 5 o'clock. I will give you all the data that I can and the completed draft or review. My one request is please look at it, please be aware of what's in it and what's being committed. Okay? And then when you guys say go, it'll be in the mail that day.
Board got any questions for Paul?
Any questions?
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the board at this time?
Yes, it's me.
Can be or? We can wait till the end.
No, it's all right. Last month, I mentioned the properties that were for sale, the auction, June 25th. Did you all get this? Philip should have gotten one of those here. Also, we've been hearing a lot about assessments and I just thought I-
I wonder why.
So I thought I made some copies for you for the media so you can see countywide what it has done and impacted. And I also put Ross's Point separately because here, it's only the towns. So you have a whole county plan, but I put Ross's Point in the back so you can see what happened in all the towns.
Must have been raining. Thank you, Senator.
The county legislators do not set, do not do the assessments.
You just get the blame.
We just get the blame. Yeah, we just have to watch the tax rate. That's what we have to do. Sales tax is holding its own. Some months are up, some months are down. Overall, the sales tax revenue is down this year, but that's up to now. But there's a lot of building going on in the county, so hopefully, it will maintain. Our tobacco money came in as projected. You know, we get money from a settlement that happened a few years ago. We were concerned this year because Philip Morris was only going to give us a fraction, but anyway, it worked out, we got our money. As you know, we use our tobacco money for county roads and within three years, all our county roads, 360 miles, will all have been paved. So we're quite pleased with that program and without taking it out of taxes. We've been able to do that. Medicaid, again this year, we're over our budget. We added $1 million to our 2003 budget for Medicaid and we are exceeding it at this point. So we're going over again. So that is a drilling expenditure. I don't know what we can do about it. We just have to keep paying the bills, I guess. I don't know if you heard, the Zachary property, of course, it's in litigation with the county, but between the county and the owner, D O T has purchased a $7,000 slice.
You're going to copy the letter today?
Oh, you did get that, okay. So it's just a little bit of it. But the owner did agree to that too, so. I don't have anything else. Someone ask you any questions or anything?
Any questions for Sleen? Thank you, Sleen.
Okay.
If there's nobody else at this time, another chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting. We'll have copies if there are any additions or deletions.
Move the acceptance rates written?
Second. Moved by Trustee Huckrow, seconded by Trustee Menard. Any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, motion carried. Bills. Are sent. Three lines of petition to delete. Thank you.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Menard, seconded by Trustee Huckrow. Any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Correspondents.
There was nothing originally on the agenda, however, we did receive a letter this morning from Montgomery Ho's Hook and Ladder Company. It was addressed to Honorable Mayor and Village Trustees. This letter is to inform you of the actions taken by the members of Montgomery Ho's Hook and Ladder Company, Number 1, Inc., on May 12, 2003, concerning joining Champlain EMS and becoming a paid EMS provider. After a lengthy discussion, it was decided by the members in attendance not to join Champlain EMS and becoming a ambulance server. At this time, we extend our sincerest best wishes to Champlain EMS and all their future endeavors. Respectfully yours, Dennis Roberts, Secretary.
That's it, Phil?
That's it, sir.
Ready? Is there any comment?
Did you want to discuss this now or later?
Um, report, Mayor and Trustees. First, my first thing is to request executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Second.
Motion made by the mayor, seconded by Trustee Menard. Roll call, vote. Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Huckrow?
Aye.
Trustee Penfield?
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson?
Aye.
And the mayor, both aye. I have one, two, three, four resolutions for the New York State Department of Transportation, Reconstruction of Route 11. These are maintenance resolutions. What they are is that the state of New York is going to put in new water lines, new sewer lines, new curving onto the side streets and paving, and after it's all done, we have to take care of that. Not Route 11, just to stop the painting. And so, we'll need a roll call vote on the, when it comes to Trustee Menard, when he reads that. That's a utility work agreement. Is that the same thing, Phil?
The utility work agreement is where you, if the board, if they so choose, will name you as the authority to sign these various utility agreements. That'll be forthcoming.
And that's all I have at this time.
Ms. Mayor, you're going to have to move on all four of those resolutions unless you want to hold them for some reason. Each one will have to be acted on.
Okay. Well, they're just regular votes.
Regular votes on each of the resolutions.
Everybody wants to read the back, it's about that thick. Resolution 03101, D O T maintenance resolution. I put that in form of a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion made by the mayor, seconded by Trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Resolution 03102, D O T maintenance resolution. Motion, move. Seconded by Trustee Huckrow. Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Resolution 03103, D O T maintenance resolution. Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
The next one is that, one's going to be a roll call vote, right? Utility?
No, that was just down there. Utility work agreement reference for a goes hand in hand with Resolution 103. Resolution 103 has to do with water and sewer and this utility work agreement will go with that one. Okay?
Resolution 104, 03104, D O T maintenance resolution. Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed, carried. And that is it for me, Trustee Menard.
First item is a resolution, D O T utility work agreements. Whereas the New York State Department of Transportation proposes to reconstruct Route 11 and Route 9B in the Village of Ross's Point, Clinton County, pin number 7143.28. And whereas, we find that this project is in the public interest and the best interest of our community, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Village Trustees of Ross's Point direct and authorize George A. Rivers' mayor to execute all utility work agreements on behalf of the Village of Ross's Point concerning this project. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon a roll call vote.
Put that in form of a motion. I'll second it. Motion made, seconded.
Just have a question. So these are, as these come in, we're authorized, George, just go ahead and sign it. Do they need to be read by anyone beforehand?
We already read them all. We got them all.
But have they, they've been reviewed by everyone? They need to be reviewed by-
It's a standard D O T straightforward, D O T standard thing.
And then there will be others that will be coming in, is that correct?
Right. What's going to, the next one that'll be coming in is for the electric work. Then we're going to be getting another one for telephone and cable.
And we do not have those yet?
No, they'll be coming, they'll be forthcoming as the project progresses and they're going to have a let date for the contract D O T in September with construction starting in the spring.
So do we need to make sure that as they come in, someone is reviewing-
What we will do each time we get one in, we'll bring them out at a meeting. I believe that would be appropriate.
Okay.
In the meantime, if by doing it this way, we don't have to do a resolution to have the mayor sign them each and every time.
I see, okay. Yeah, thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call, vote. Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Huckrow?
Aye.
Trustee Penfield?
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson?
Aye.
And the mayor, both aye.
And my second item is also a resolution for uncollected electric accounts. Whereas certain electric customer accounts are deemed uncollectible by the village and whereas it is advisable to write these accounts off our books, therefore, be resolved that the attached lists of accounts be written off effective May 31, 2003. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon a roll call vote. Put that in form of a motion.
I guess we have right now just a little bit of insight. We have 36 customers that are going to be written off for a total of $5,508.30. This is our annual, annually pass.
I need a second to add motion.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion?
I just have one question. Are sent?
Yes.
How is it that these become to be deemed uncollectible? For example, there are a few names on the list that I recognize. How do we decide which accounts are uncollectible and which ones aren't?
If the person, if you keep sending them the bill and you don't get a response-
So if they left them-
If they've left them, there's nothing more address-
No forwarding address?
No forwarding address and you keep sending the bill every month and you keep getting your back and forth, so if you don't get a back, you don't get a response.
Okay, all right.
Well, I just have a question too. Now, are any of these people, now what happens two, three, four years down the road if these people come back and want electricity?
They have to pay the bill. They have to pay. They have to pay this off before they'll be allowed to have electricity.
Okay. Oh, I hate to do this. What are you going to do? I've got to balance the board, so.
Hold up. Any other discussion? Roll call, vote. Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Huckrow?
No.
Trustee Penfield?
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson? I've been abstained from voting on this. Mayor, both aye.
And that's all I have for this evening.
Thanks. Trustee Huckrow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
First item on the agenda, we have a letter from the Long Island Water Corporation to whom they concern, enclosed is your 2001 safety work from American Water Works Association. Congratulations on a job well done. Safety is an unglamorous but important part of our job and at your organization, obviously, this function has been handled in an exemplary manner. Keep up the good work and I hope to be awarded another award next year. And we have a certificate from that group. Congratulations for our fire department, they do a heck of a good job. If you walk in that place, you beat off the floor. Second item is a update on the water. This way, water.
Okay. On the water storage tank, you can all see the painting is progressing and they're starting to put the letters on the tank. And this Wednesday will be the last day that we'll have a chance to issue an addendum for the contracts 2 through 5. At this point, it looks like the specs are nice and tight. I haven't heard any squawking from the contractors, so I don't think there will be an addendum. And on May 28th, a week from this Wednesday, we'll have the bids in for contracts 2 through 5 of the water improvement project. And also, we were in the wet well and the intake fault the last couple of weeks and just tightening bolts, doing an annual maintenance inspection. And we'll be diving, checking our zebra muscle control line and such and the screens probably next week. Any questions?
Doug, do we have a date when it's going up?
When the tank is going up at this time, no. I believe it'll be in June.
Third letter.
We'll let you know. And it'll be going up at night.
Will we have it done before the break?
It'll be done at night?
Yes, it's done at night while the wind, that's what we've been told, that they do it at night when the winds are calmer, so.
There's going to be a lot of people upstairs. There's a lot of teachers that want to bring their students up.
Maybe it'll be a Friday night.
It may still be very long.
Maybe one more.
Oh, exactly, yeah.
Thank you, Doug. I would also like to request an executive session to discuss electric personnel.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, vote. Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Huckrow?
Aye.
Trustee Penfield?
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson?
Aye.
And the mayor, both aye.
That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Trustee Penfield.
Trustee Huckrow. Trustee Penfield?
The first item that I have on the agenda for this evening is an update on the issue that was read during correspondence in terms of us joining forces with Champlain EMS and forming an ambulance district for the town of Champlain. I attended the meeting on Monday night of our fire company and was not surprised to get their letter today with their response. I happen to agree with their response and I think that we should take action tonight to the same end as their letter. I think it's not in the best interest of the Village of Ross's Point at this time to join up with Champlain EMS. I would wholeheartedly stand behind the decision that the members of the fire company made. So, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, the only thing I have to add is to let the board know that as president of the company, that I went to a town board meeting last week, last Tuesday, also there was captain of rescue George Cookman and third assistant chief Bruce Stevan, company. They were there as individuals. I was there representing the company. And I brought some questions up. I'm sure you have seen the paper, the North Countrymen made it sound like we were there to fight, but we weren't. The only thing that I presented to them was the fact that the reason that we had Trustee Penfield come to our meeting was that nobody knew really what was going on. There was a lot of rumors in the street. I had talked to half a dozen members and every member I got a different perspective from. So that was one of the reasons that I requested that Trustee Penfield come and give her presentation before the company and I thank her for that. As she stated, we had our meeting, regular meeting, and hence the letter came. Back to the meeting in Champlain, I, the thing that I was concerned about most was the fact that we didn't know what was going on. And I brought that up and, you know, we hashed over and talked about it. They claimed that some letters came to the village. The only two letters that I know about, that the clerk had given me, were the letters from supervisor, Mr. Leett, and John Southwick. The other thing I brought up is a letter from John Southwick. It stated that we had till the 20th of this month, 20th of May- It stated that we had till the 20th of this month, 20th of May, to give them an answer. And things had already gone for it. So with all that said and done, there was some other discussion that had to do with the, the district itself, which I'm not going to go into. All in all, when the meeting was done, you know, I offered them the best wishes and that we would work with them and that's the way it was left. We were, I think they were a little surprised that we were there. And the only point that I made, Trustee Penfield, was I think we should have an open dialogue back and forth with the, uh, board, the, uh, department. And they, they agree to that. I mean, it is an open meeting. What I am going to do is I'm going to personally try to attend some. I'm also going to look for members of the company to try to go once in a while so that we have, you know, because even though we're not going into it, we're not going in with the contract, or in with the fire district, we're still involved with it as the chief knows. So that's basically our agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
And I, I don't, you know, we have not yet been officially notified about our contract when it does expire on December 31st by the fire district. So I, you know, I know what a couple of members of their board has spoken to me about, but I think until we are officially notified, I would say everything is on hold. We've signed the contract through the end of the year with them. And as far as I'm concerned, I would be very willing to keep things the way they are even into next year. But I think that we need to wait and see how things will come and pass with this new arrangement that they have before, you know, before they will notify us. My assumption is their, their plan is to begin the first part of next year, is that correct?
They're going to be, they're in place for the first part of the year with both the, uh, the corporation as it is or, and also state service. That's what my understanding was at the meeting.
And that's also for the fire protection as well, is that correct?
No.
No, they're not.
That is strictly from the animal side.
Okay.
What's going to happen with the fire protection? No idea.
So I think that we have sort of a wait and see attitude for the time being to see what will happen with our contract with fire district. But at this point, I would like to make a motion that we do respond to, to Dr. Southwick's letter, um, basically reiterating what, what the company sent to us, that at this point it is not what, what we would like to do.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by you to sign. Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And again, I think that we should, you know, wish them well. I certainly wish them well. I've had a couple of different conversations with members of their board and I really do hope that if this is really what they want to do, that it works out for them. I really do. And I think we'll, we'll just wait and see what happens in terms of our contract with them. Uh, the second item that I have this evening is a discussion regarding a residential zoning waiver for matters that are referred to the county planning office. Carol had approached me at the beginning of last week regarding, um, some of the procedures that we have in place when certain variances are applied for and certain special use permits are applied for through our zoning board appeals. And apparently there is a good bit of lag time, which comes from, um, what is a requirement in terms of letting the county know in a timely fashion so that they can then review these applications before they come back to our local zoning board. And I know that, um, our code enforcement officer and also our zoning board chairman are here tonight. And I think, did you want to say something about that?
Well, uh, we have contacted them in the past several times, Glenn Cutter, with the county planning board. And on residential issues, they're not concerned. See, anything within 500 feet of the village boundaries or state property or a state park or anything that's boundary within 500 feet have to go to them for review. And on residential, they're not concerned because it doesn't really affect the, anything. They always just blank it, give us some approval, but it takes about a month, maybe six weeks to get the paperwork back. And that's why they sent the waiver for George to sign it. On basic things that happen, they don't care about it. But if we had a commercial establishment going in, then we'd have to review it. Or if we had something that we thought was controversial, we would send it down.
Right. And I spoke with Mr. Cutter at the planning office and, um, he and I had a lengthy conversation about why this is important and then on the other side of the coin, why it's not important. And I know one of the things that he was telling me on the phone is that it, is one of the things that Mr. Renee brought up to the zoning board a couple of months ago. By having the process slowed down a little bit, it gives the members of your board a chance also to do maybe a better investigation than sometimes they are able to. I know that we turn things around very quickly and, um, he did have one word of caution just to make sure that we are taking the necessary time. If we're not sending things down to them, then we will be able to make some of the decisions more quickly. But how important it really is to take some extra time to really check out the situation so that we're not just rushing through them to try to accommodate the person who's applied for the variance and for the permit. And, um, I think my other concern, and after talking to him, I think I felt a little bit better about, was that they have a lot more expertise at the county level in some ways than we do. I mean, these people are certified planners and this is the job that they, they deal in. So, um, anyway, to make a long story short, after talking with him on the phone, I think we can go ahead and I'd like to put that in form of a motion that we do allow Mayor Rivers to sign this waiver. It seems like we can work out the timeframe and so on through the local zoning board, but that it won't necessarily have any negative impact on, on the village if we do that. So I'll make that a motion that we go ahead and allow him to do that.
Second. Motion made by Trustee Penfield, seconded by Trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by you to sign. Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And, um, the only other thing I have is that I did not get a chance to finish up the resolutions on the zoning fees, but hopefully I'll have those for the first meeting in June. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Penfield. Trustee Jefferson.
Okay, Doug, would you like to speak on the sewer?
Sure. Uh, the sewer work.
And the sewers?
Yes, it is. And this, today they completed the pressure test of the, this, this section of the south end forest main and it passed. And, uh, they're finishing up restoration, Lock Brothers is, uh, sidewalk, curbing, topsoil, et cetera. They should be done by the end of this week. And, uh, negotiations go on with the DEC out of Albany. A week from this Friday, we will have a DEC attorney up here to meet with mayor and the administrator and myself to discuss the outfall permit that we're waiting for. That's really the, uh, the obstacle of going forth with the remainder of the sewer project, contracts three through seven. And, uh, we should have some information, an update from John Carr this week on the status of contracts three through seven with whatever input he's received from the DEC so we can look at a timeline for that. Um, any questions?
Doug, I noticed that Rob, the theme on street like you said.
Yes.
Are they gonna start doing block by block as they continue through Maple Street? Are they, are they gonna start paving like from one end?
No, at this time.
Are they gonna do it all at once?
We're gonna do it all at once. What's gonna happen is Lux's contract is nearing completion. And what we're going to do is leave the street the way it is and the village will fill in potholes, et cetera. And, uh, when we see that timeline from John Carr, we'll have a better idea of when he recommends we let the Maple Street restoration. And when Maple Street gets restored, they're going to go in and rip up the concrete and the blacktop that's there and redo the whole road. And, uh, there is discussion, uh, at the trustee level about possibly splitting Maple Street reconstruction into two projects. Uh, we'll be looking at that and getting back to you on that. Certainly could be done, but it would, uh, cost more money to do that, so.
Brian, how many more ladders do we gotta do plus that?
Probably, uh, just from Clinton Street to Crack Street. Probably eight.
Eight, okay. To hold up on, on, on the whole project is we've gotta put that, was it 24-inch waterline?
Mm-hmm.
From pump station up to the water tank. And it has to go through that Clinton Street intersection. No sense paving that and then holler right straight through it. Digging it all up again. Unfortunately, put everything into a hole and we are a bad guy right now. But that contract is the one we're going to be looking, looking at on the 27th.
Yes.
What's the latest time we can go out and bid, pave it before the fall? Where they close the blacktop plant?
Latest, right. Blacktop plant's closed in November, but, uh, so.
We'd have to have a bid ready by when?
We should have a bid ready by September. Yeah, August. Because, because it's not just paving, we want to destroy it and restore it. So we need time to rip it up.
Actually, actually, we can have that looked together now. We know what we want to do there. It's just that the water line is holding us up. That's all that's holding us up. Go out and bid.
Right. But those two things have.
But what I'm saying is, we know what we want to do on this street. We can, we can go out, we can put the specifications together and go to bid and soon as that's done, then we can start. If we get the mother eight ladder, because that's it. Everything else is done. All the digging is done to the.
Right, all the disruption is done.
Once we're finished with the water line, right?
Right, just that line or something.
Right.
So what are you saying, you got the paving, we can go out, we know what the specs are on the paving.
Right.
So we can get a bid on that?
Well, we can, we still can begin that.
Well, again, this is we can get it, but we can, we can have all that done. So that July 25th, they finish that street, just say, if they finish it, then August 1st, we can get up the contract and say, hey, go.
Right.
To push it along. I don't want to push it along and end up like a bust in the past, the one like this and one like that. I want to end up the good street.
Well, it's like John Carr said, this project's gotta be done right. So it takes a little bit, another couple of weeks or an extra month or whatever to make sure that's right. I think that's the right thing to do, very important.
Want to make any comment on this, Doug?
Sure. Um, in trying to get the outfall approved, what has happened is the DEC attorney out of Albany has explained to us that, um, because the APA intersects a portion of Clinton County, Clinton County is designated as a forest preserve county. And what that means is any property that is owned by the DEC is considered forest preserve. So even that 300-foot stretch of old roadbed out there north of Route 2 by the fort is, since it's owned by the DEC, forest preserve. Therefore, if we want to put our outfall pipe through the forest preserve, then that section of the preserve must be deeded over from the DEC to OGS. And then OGS, we can work with them to put our outfall through. But in order to take some forest preserve property and use it for a public purpose, we must, um, demonstrate a benefit to the environment. And, and that can be done either by mitigation, which is where if we took forest preserve, we must give back forest preserve from some other place. Or, um, we can do, I'll use the word betterment. And, uh, and such as building a fishing ramp or something at the end of that, uh, outfall shoreline. So for $8,000 to $10,000, we could build a little wooden fishing platform, boil it into our project cost. That would be our betterment and we could put our outfall through. So that's the only way I can describe it.
You don't want to hear my words on that.
Could we then take credit for that as part of our matching funds for our waterfront revitalization?
I think we certainly could.
Actually, it says in the letter that I got, this is what it says. It says, "Take the form of a fishing pier at the outfall location or some other recreational facility." Well, we are going to do that on a state dock. Already it's gonna have room to be. So as far as I'm concerned, it's a done deal. It's done with and the DEC cannot get involved.
You're, in my opinion, follow your own on that one because you are revitalizing your waterfront. Uh, however, I, basically if a dock is built, that's gonna take away from the, no state dock. I mean, not take away physically, it's gonna take people away.
Well, my, my point is.
Could you go around the boardwalk all the way?
Oh, sure.
Well, that would be great, tie them together.
How the hell could I do that? There's a marina in the middle.
Go around it. Go above the road.
There's a channel out in the middle, I can't block that.
Anyway, uh, my point on this is in 19, in 1987, when they built the bridge here, they took away our beach, they gave the property from the bridge commission to the DEC. Uh, we all know that, that the bridge actually ruined the beach, the new bridge. But that's here and there. They took it, took it that way. We no longer could have a beach there. They left the pier out there. It didn't blow up because the DEC had decided they were gonna build a fishing pier. We are gonna build a fishing pier. That was 1987. Now they want Ross's Point to build a fishing pier. Something wrong with that picture.
I agree. I agree 100% because what you just stated is absolute fact because my administration was involved in that. They promised.
We'll have a little discussion with the attorney.
Yeah, a week from Friday. And that's about it for sewer, Brian.
Okay. Thanks for your time. Just another roadblock trying to get a line in that we're under a consent order to do.
Okay, I just have a couple of things tonight. This is in response to your recent letter requesting a waiver of a $5,000 permit for the Village of Ross's Point new sewer outfall project. The fee should be $1,253. Uh, it's including a municipal discount. While our statutes prevent waiver of this fee, we will allow payments in two annual installments if this would assist the village. So in order to go along with our sewer program, I'd like to make a motion to pay this $1,253 permit fee to the state so we can proceed with the sewer outfall project.
That's so we can put the pipe on the bottom of the lake.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by you to sign.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Okay, and I just have a couple of other things to talk about tonight. Uh, first of all, I want to, every meeting between now and the 4th of July, I want to make sure that everybody gets us out. Our friends from Hometown Cable are, are here and give us a good shot every night. Uh, the parade route is changing. We're gonna start on Academy Street, come out of the elementary school and the Ayers Barking Lot. Proceed south. When we come to Mountain Mark, we're gonna turn east and go on Champlain Street to Racine's Mobile. We're gonna go north on Lake Street and the parade will end right out here in front of the Civic Center. The bands will be peeling off in Delagars and the big trucks will be able to go down the State Street. So that's basically the parade route. If you know somebody that wants to get into the parade, you can call the village office or you can call me at home. Uh, this weekend I'll be going to the St. Mary's Bazaar Parade and I'll also be passing out, uh, our papers for the parade and maps. Um, I had a couple of people in the village tell me that we're, the street sweeper's putting out a lot of dust. And so I was just wondering whether we can maybe ask Bobby to put a little bit more water down when he, when he goes out on that. It seems like other places they clean the streets, but there isn't as much dust.
There isn't any dust.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know, for some reason we get a lot of dust, so.
Well, it might be Maple Street.
No, 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 I don't mean Maple. Every street but Maple. And Mrs. Willard Overy asked me if someone from the village would come and look at the sidewalk in front of her house because we're putting down too much salt and it's breaking up the.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. So I don't know if we have to doctor Nellie or somebody can go and look at it. There's a strip in the front of our house, it's about this long and it's quite deep and it looks like it came from the salt, so.
I've asked Mr. Pelkey to check that out and he has already done that.
Oh, good, okay. Maybe what we're gonna have to do is just come in and take it out and replace it.
Give her a slap.
What's asking?
Give her a slap.
Well, it's only, it's weird the way it's cut out, but she keeps her house quite nice and so she can certainly about that. Is that it? And that's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson. I have one thing before I go to other reports.
Mr. Mayor, can we, I want Mr. Pelkey to state on that issue, but.
Sure, absolutely.
I went up to Mrs. O'Rey's residence and I checked out the sidewalks in front of her house. I think it's just the age of the concrete of her, of curb step itself because the village blocks in front of her house, they're not drenched.
Yeah.
I don't know if we can try to ground it in more or, I think it's just the age of the concrete that it is.
Weird the way it's about, oh, you know, it's probably 15 years old. 18 inches long and there's a spot and it's down quite.
A little more damage. After, after 25, 30 years, it's probably started to move the other way.
But it's weird the way it went down. I mean, I don't know anything about concrete, but she said to me also the grass along the sidewalks is dead because we're using some white salt. So I, so I just thought I'd mention that so I don't have to worry. That's all I have to report tonight.
Dr. Webber. I have one thing to bring up for the board. I have received a phone call today from O'Shore Hamilton, from, the guy's chairman of the economic development committee, Chief Pabreen. He has scheduled a meeting June 6th in Albany at 10:30 PM at the power authority office on economic development and I, my presence has been requested, so I'm asking the board for permission to go to Albany on the 6th of June. Make a motion? Yes.
Second. Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
What's the topic?
Economic development.
But is there anything specific? I know he writes for the paper and.
Power for jobs. But it's about, with the power authority. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Village clerk, what do you have for words of wisdom tonight for us?
Um, just kind of a reminder, I believe everyone got this in their mail, we received one in the village office, but I'd just like to kind of reiterate it. Town of Champlain sent out their dog enumeration. There will be enumeration of all dogs residing in the town of Champlain during the months of June and July. Mandatory HR licensing has been changed to four months. And it goes on and explains all this good stuff. They also note arrangements to offer amnesty to all dog owners who are behind in pain of their dog's license. So it's just kind of a reminder to let folks know to try to license their dogs. And also as a reminder, there is going to be a pre-rabies clinic on the 22nd of May at the Champlain Fire Station from 6:00 PM to 8:30. And this was signed right through supernovus, the dog control office of Town of Champlain. So I just thought I'd bring that up, that's all I have.
Thank you, Arson. Thank you. Brian? Code enforcement officer, Douggy?
Yeah, yeah, I'll be quick. Just, you'll see a couple new faces around this summer. Last year we hired an intern to help us, this year we've hired two interns to help us. And they're gonna be working very closely with Eric this summer. And one of them will be dedicated to a village engineer project, which is the ongoing infrastructure mapping and cataloging. We're working with the village administrator and soon we'll be working with Brian Pelkey to have sewer, water, electric and storm all catalogued in computer, in hard copy and binders and such. And so that we'll get it out of people's heads, out of the ground, onto paper. And so there's one fellow named Phil DeMello, who's a junior at the University of Connecticut. I'm bringing him on to be specifically dedicated to CAD and working on that. There's another fellow named Carl Bauer, whom you may have already met. His father works at Wyatt. He's a civil engineering major, a junior at Clarkson. He'll be working with us on infrastructure, but also he'll be a junior inspector with Eric on some of the construction projects once they, after going in. Thank you.
Open the meeting for the public at this time? Again? Yeah.
I mean, if he can talk twice, okay. Now, mine is not to do, I just would like to ask if it would be at all possible to review the corner of Pine and Maple? I know you hate Pine, but there is a godly gift that you really can't go straight across if you want to come up the other side of it.
Add it through to Al. Add it through to Al every morning to check it.
The north side, the north side of Pine Street is fine, but the south side, if you try to go across on the Pine, the light doesn't pierce. Because that deep in the hole, I'm checking.
And no one else wish to address the board this time, I'll take a motion for recess.
You got it.
Second.
All those in favor, aye? Bye, Mr. Mayor.